Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Lake Forest South Elementary. I'd like to call to order the Thursday, March 23th, Meeting of the Lake Forest Board of Education. We'll begin this evening with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I'm.
Thank you. Start this evening rule all board members, Dr. Wyatt. Mrs. McCloskey.
Here.
Mrs. Starkey.
Here.
And President Earl Dempsey serving as chair is present as well. We have four board members present. Thank you all for being here. We're on to 2.4 approval of agenda, Mrs. Starkey.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented tonight.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries four to zero.
Resolution 2.5, make a motion, we approve the minutes from the March 9th, 2023 meeting.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none to move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Extensions. Motion carries four to zero. We're up to 2.6 recognition and presentations. As I mentioned, we are, the board is on our road, our annual road trip to schools a year. But the pleasure to be here Lake Forest South Elementary. Dr. Lucas, off very.
Thank you, President Dempsey. Good evening, everybody. You've got Mr. Truitt here and Dr. Huber, the leadership team from South Elementary School. What do you got for us tonight, Mr. Truitt?
All right. Well, we got a couple of different things. We wanted to showcase some of the great things that we're going on here at South. So welcome, everyone. Kevin Truitt, proud friend of ours here at South Elementary. Over here by the door, just want to try to make an escape. That was my side kid, she's our assistant principal, Dr. Huber. And we're very excited to host board meeting here tonight and have all of you join us. Like I said, we wanted to go ahead and focus on some of the great things that are going on at South. And one of those, we're going to focus with our course. South's course performs at many building events and all the district events. So they have performed at the winter concert at the high school. They've also performed at the spring concert here last spring, which we're going to do a little bit right this year. But you can also see them caroling at the lighting of the Christmas tree in Harrington, going to different establishments and caroling in our local businesses. And then also you'd be able to see them here this evening. Now, the next two events that they have is out on May 6th for I Love Lake Forest Day. So we hope everyone can join us with some food, fun, some excitement. And to get there, vote yes for a referendum. And then again, on May 10th, we will be here for our Night Around the World, which is going to take place in Springfield. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Mrs. Gerald, who is our music teacher here at South. And South course. Yeah, Dr. We even watched them perform. I was away with some others, training that we had in a couple of weeks, so they wanted to go ahead and perform for me. And Dr. Huber at 10:15 today, and I saw that they were excited, something they were nervous, once I'm gonna throw up, and you didn't. So I told him, you know what, you gotta get a knockout of the park, and he did, so he gave them one more round of applause. So like I said, we wanted to showcase some of our talent that we have here at South. And over the summertime, we purchased two pottery wheels. This baby Friday is our art teacher, and she wanted to incorporate playing pottery with her life. And for me, the only thing I knew about playing pottery, what I saw on the ghosts with the star kind of swaying. But I did learn a lot of things this year, because I did learn that, you know, if you can incorporate that with creativity, with patience and time, you can take something that looks just like this in this bag, and you can create art like our first graders did on this. Unfortunately, their first graders could not come here this evening. But Mrs. Huber's class will present these pottery to each of our board members, and Dr. Lucas. It is a timing process from start to finish. It took them approximately a month. So they did make some for themselves as well. But if you kind of look at the attention to detail, we thought that they did an amazing job.
They do a better job of that. You're welcome.
Now, next, what we want to do is be able to share with you what goes on inside our building throughout the course of the day. And in order to do that, we're thinking about how can we incorporate everything we can see for our evening event? We thought this would be a great time to do so. So Mrs. Jester is our spec ed clerk, but she is also our yearbook coordinator. And she does a great job capturing kids in the moment. And we wanted to share that slideshow with you to give you a feel of what things look like throughout the course of the day here at South Elementary. We hope our slide show captured why we always say it's a great day to be a Spartan. And we wanted to present, I know that Miss Kelly, our school secretary, had reached out to each of you about your shirt sizes. And we're hoping that Dr. Lucas, we're gonna have, wanted to get a picture for each of you guys. There's a front that says Lake Forest Spartan alumni. This is for Mr. Ralph. Starkey. So if you guys stand up, and if we alternate where you show the front, you show the back, you show the front, you show the back, you show the front. So everybody can see, we'd like to get a picture that captured what we say. It captures what we say it's a great day to be a Spartan. Because once you're a Spartan, you're always a Spartan. One, two, three. Awesome. All right. So that's all we have for you guys. We appreciate the students coming out. And we'll pass back over to the board to continue.
Thank you. We are proud of you. Thank you so much.
Turn it back over to President Dempsey. Yeah, so thank you very much to you and your staff and your students. Just love the, appreciate the gifts as well. This is extremely professional looking, like perfectly round and not a flaw on it, outstanding. All right. 2.7 citizens' participation opportunity during each meeting, members of the public to address the board. We had asked if anyone who was wanting to do so could sign up for this in its office on arrival. Do we have anyone, does it have anyone signed up this evening? But we will open it again prior to our next meeting in April. With that, we'll move on to section three, 3.1 Student Council Report. Understand, we have Ms. Madison Hodeck for us. Welcome, Ms. Hodeck. Welcome back, right?
Yes. Okay, so April 4th, the second level business students are visiting business classes and touring the campus of the University of Delaware. I'm actually putting that myself. April 24th, the first level business students are invited to participate in the finance part at Junior Achievement in Wilmington. Mathly qualified for invitational and will be competing against other top schools next Wednesday, March 29th. Red Bay, they competed at the Delaware State Convention. And here in the vault, the voter voting team got first place with team members being Emily Groll, Julianne Novak, Emma Zlock, Alana Tesoro. Three out of the 14 members placing individually. For parent public speaking, Caitlin Pippin got first place. Employment skill, Montana Molding got first place. State FPA president is Noah Dixon. He's a Lake Forest 2022 graduate. Current speaking, Iba Gallo got third. Exembarianis speaking, Eddie Gary got seven. Agriculture sales, their team got second place with Shy the Urban, Roger Skinner, Izzy Wilson, and Mason Hay. The marketing plan team got second place with Kitty Argo, Grace Murphy, and Miley Oki. Stafford Coach Honda got fourth place with Gigi Rovano, Eva Starr, and Justice Morris. Alexa Roland, Alexa Star. Alex, Alexa, Alexa Star, they're on Delaware Fest, and Jane Patrick, Farm Business Management got fifth place with Kelly Hammond, Nathan Atten, Elena Aguilar, and Bill Burrows. Me Evaluation got sixth place. Giuliani, Chris Porter Votto, 34, Kayla Ryle, and Cody Rowling. State FPA degrees, we had 11 students get their degrees. American degrees was Caleb Murphy. He's a past Lake Forest graduate. Josh Menard and Trinity Ranichal. Proficiency awards is Ryan Deputy, Cole Murphy, Caitlin Pippin. And the nominating chair was Brandon Hammond. FCL teams in the process of getting their cap up and running. They are preparing all the appetizers for the FPA banquet. Lake Forest High School will be one of 10 schools in attendance preparing appetizers for their largest fundraising event in Wilmington with a local chef. The annual Delaware Restaurant Association Educational Foundation fundraising dinner benefiting our 23 Delaware Pro Start Program is on Wednesday, April 19th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The event takes place at the Riverfront Events in Wilmington, Delaware. The goal for this evening is to show our sponsors and attendees what our Delaware Pro Start Program is all about. Pairing Pro Start students with local chefs and get them involved in every aspect of the dinner, preparing and sharing with guests.
Thank you, Ms. Hodeck. Any questions or discussion for Madison? So Madison, if I remember correctly, 11th grade, correct? And remind us again of your position.
I'm secretary.
Secretary. Okay, so you're welcome back anytime. Look forward to seeing you a lot the rest of this year and all of next. Thank you very much.
Very well into 3.3 Superintendent Report, Dr. Lucas. Thank you, President Dempsey. Good evening, everybody. As always, I like to start my report by recognizing a few people in the district who go above and beyond for us. I think it's long overdue that I have communicated my thanks to Mr. Black and Ms. Bulchek and all the LFA reps in the district that think we have an uncommonly good relationship with our staff in Lake Forest. And the influence on this from the LFA leadership cannot be understated. This past week, the staff and administration got together, solidified that relationship. And my understanding was there were some great conversations and collaboration toward that effort. So thank you, Ben and Anita for their leadership, as well as Mr. Warman and the team represented the administration in those discussions. Also like to congratulate Ms. Hobbs and the OM folks. They had a huge meet this weekend, a lot of success there. And we'll be seeing them here pretty soon, I'm sure, with a number of recognitions. I'd also like to thank and congratulate the high school staff and students who participated in the SAT. This is a graduation requirement. The report I'm hearing is that we are sure to exceed the minimum state requirements for participation. So thank you also to Mr. Dick and the CIA team and the many folks who were at the high school yesterday directly supporting the school test administration, big day. This is our last meeting before spring break. So before I forget, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Easter, blessed Passover, Ramadan. And if there's a different holiday your family celebrates, I wish you well in that as well. As for other calendar reminders, hope you're aware that tomorrow is the last day of the third marking period. And report cards will be available on hack, March 30. There's no school for students Monday, the 27th, for staff development. And the last day for students before spring break is April 6th. Students return from spring break on April 17th, and then it is a fast track to summer. So if history is any proof, we'll be here before we know it. As always, I encourage you to keep your eye on the district calendar to stay up on what is going on. One final thing I want to keep on everyone's radar is a school referendum. We are fast approaching on May 6th. The required paperwork that was approved two weeks ago was submitted to the Election Commission. And we are in regular contact with them to make sure that we're meeting all of our legal requirements. We've scheduled five community information sessions beginning when we return from the spring break, the first of which is April 17th, 6:30 p.m. at East Elementary School. You can find anything and everything you know, you need to know about our school referendum, including locations of all remaining information meetings on our website under the tab, Referendum. Thank you, and I give the floor back to President Dempsey for any question or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Any questions or discussion for Dr. Lucas from the board? So just one question regarding the filing with the state elections paperwork that we approved last meeting. There was some, some potential concern that they send it back a lot. Have we gotten feedback? Has it been approved? But they're still waiting.
Still waiting. Talked to our attorney on Tuesday. He's been pressing them to make sure they get it back in time. He feels like we don't have anything to worry about, so. No news is good news at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you again, sir. Up to 3.4 LFA report, Mr. Ken Black. Good evening.
Hi, Ben. Howdy. So I'm gonna start off by saying that at the end, Ms. Bulchek is gonna give an update on the fundraiser. I think you'll be pleased by the numbers. Maybe some of you won't be. So I also want to take a note at the end of the marking period. So the teachers, the staff, for all working with the students have finished standing the marking period as successfully as possible and moved into the fourth marking period or the second half of course for the, for the high school. Spring sports have started. Events are starting. If you have not gone to any of them, I'm sure the coaches would love to see you there, and the kids would love to see you as well. So spring break is coming up, and I know that the, the staff and the students are looking forward to an opportunity to relax. I'm sure the, some of the employees that will be around during spring break will be glad to have us going. So we're not bothering them quite so much. We're after the end of the year, EST of the year, and behavioral health professional of the year. So we wish the best for those candidates who are participating in those. And we also, LFA would like to also express appreciation for the collaborative and supportive relationship between the association and the administration of the board. As Dr. Lucas referred to earlier, we do have a very strong and positive relationship on both sides, and we very much appreciate how much that is to the benefit of the students. And I admire Ms. Bulchek's going to do a fundraiser.
So speaking of benefits to the students, we are trying to raise $2,000 towards scholarships. And as you saw at the board meeting last time, we've only done it for about a week. So we have currently, and I picked it off with putting money in Mr. Dempsey's and Mr. Dr. Lucas's information. So to give everybody an update, Dr. Lucas currently has $233.93. Mr. Dempsey has $18. Mr. Reichenberg has $7.24. Ms. Rate has $13.25. Mr. Sheehan has five. Ms. Dodson has a dollar. Ms. Kurt McDow has $24.07, and Mr. Collison has $18.07. With extra support that we could possibly be getting, it would be great.
In honor of self.
Guys, for those who are helping and putting that information in there, we are really trying to reach us $2,000 so that we can give some scholarships to our student. And the drawing, the person with the least amount, it would grow the pie, which right now is Ms. Kurt McDow. And she would be throwing it, and Dr. Lucas is paying. We'll see what happens, but we've only been a week in, but we really have some. I have played on Facebook, it's on teachers' website, schools websites, our website. So if anybody needs to know where to go, any of the buildings have the buckets, as you can see. So please help us get to that $2,000 so we can get scholarships. Thank you.
Take back everything that's. And I think we definitely need an audit in North. Well, Anita and Ben, thank you both very much, and it looks like the fundraisers all too lax to start, so much success there. All right, we are on to section four, unfinished business, 4.1. This is.
We make a motion that we approve following policies as modified during this discussion.
Emotional floor properly seconded. This is for second readings and for discussion, and we will go briefly through each one as usual. Starting with GCE, Certified Staff Recruiting. A discussion on GCE. Mrs. Starkey.
This seems a little bit, but one of the things directs the Human Resources Director. I always feel like it's very weird to direct the director.
Yeah.
I'm saying.
Yeah.
I don't have a great option. I have empowers, requires. I don't have a great.
Or signs.
Assigns.
So I was the one last meeting who didn't like the expects, right? Because we should be doing more than expecting. We should be directing or commanding. But as I said it in the meeting, that we were directing the director, it sounded odd, so I would, yeah. Assigns, requires, requires, requires. Okay. Thank you for correcting that. Mrs. Starkey. Anything else on this? Yes, Mrs. Starkey.
And in the second paragraph, the third sentence, I believe, teaching positions for the school will be posted only after a needs assessment. Like, I'm just curious if that fits in more? Like, if we're talking about recruiting staff, I guess maybe, I don't know, I'm just felt a little bit out of place to me. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that.
So I take it somewhat as progressive stepping through. Like, before we can actually recruit, we have to have positions to make, positions to recruit for. And we get to that by actually posting those. That's kind of how I took it, Sarah.
Yeah.
Mrs. McCloskey. Mrs. McCoskey.
And pardon me if I'm wrong, but does it also need commas there with and, and district? And that same sentence, could that be removed and?
Sorry. You hear? And of the district, Trinity School, comma, and of the district, comma, have that performed?
Miss, Dr. Wyatt.
I don't think it's necessary that this, I mean, no, I think it reads better.
I, it could go either way. I don't think it's necessary either. I hear what you're saying, no. This is starting.
Yeah, I think it's just more, it's not a big deal and I don't think it necessarily.
It is the, the way that that read, when you read it open and fluently, it kind of has a natural break there. Plus, it doesn't, it can be removed and still be correct grammatically, correct? Just the way it reads down. It, it almost feels like a run-on even though it's not.
Yeah, got you. Okay. Anything else on this policy? All right, let's move on to GCF, Certified Staff Hiring. Questions or discussion on GCF? So you know, moving on to GCH, Certified Staff Orientation and Training. GCH. So you know, moving on to HA, Negotiations Goals/Priority Objectives. Discussion on HA. So you know, move on to HG. Superintendent's Role in Negotiations. Discussion on HG. So you know, moving on to IA, Instructional Goals and Learning Objectives. Discussion on IA. So you know, moving on to IE, Organization of Instruction, discussion on this policy. Dr. Wyatt.
It says throughout the Lake Forest, the district, which is correct. But shouldn't we say within?
Probably within.
Within?
Yeah, I would.
And that's in two different places in the first paragraph and also the second paragraph. I just thought that the within the district was more appropriate.
I would agree. Yeah, thoughts or discussion now? Great, thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Moving on to IHB, Home, I'm sorry, Homebound Instruction. Discussion on this policy. So you know, moving on to IHEG, Homeschooling. A discussion on this policy. So I would thank, thank the administration for researching that, adding co-curriculars for the last. That's great. That concludes the individual policy reviews. Any other discussion or comments on second readings?
Hold on, let's say.
Yes.
Please.
Okay. All right, so you know, we have a motion on the floor properly seconded. We shall move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries order zero.
Section 4.2, the 2023, 2024 student calendar, make a motion, we approve the calendar as modified during the discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. McCoskey. A motion on the floor properly seconded, we'll move to discussion here. And would like to turn it over to administration to hear a little bit about our 30 days of public comment and how that sort out this morning.
Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Dempsey mentioned, the initial draft calendar that you see attached to the agenda was first reviewed on February 23, board meeting. Per requirements, we treat the calendar similar to policy reviews where the calendar was published for a 30-day review. We provide a simple survey for community members to interact with. We did receive a handful of feedback, which the board has been provided prior to the meeting today. And we recommend to the board that we approve the, the board approved the calendar as presented after discussion.
All right, thank you. Questions or discussion for Mr. Warman or anyone else on the panel? So it was good to see the feedback. Thank you for sharing it. Thanks to everyone, all the community and parents who shared. There was a tremendous amount of positives to it, especially related to the post-Labor Day start. So it's nice to see that it's been well received, the district, going back to that the last couple of years. The one thing I noticed was there was some, some of the other discussion points were around Transitional Day specifically for kindergarten. So could you explain to us what that is, what it's about, what occurs? And why there may be some differing of opinions in the kindergarten as opposed to other grades?
Sure. So for kindergarten classes here in Lake Forest School District, historically, they began school year almost referred to as a staggering start. That means essentially, that meant essentially half of the kindergarten students would come to school on the first, second day, first, first and second day of the traditional calendar. And then the other half of the students who did not attend days one and two would then return and attend days three and four while the first half remained home. This was a way to help transition and assist students who begin at the ages of five and six, who were starting kindergarten at that point in time. The challenge to that is that technically we would, we are, we're losing two instructional days for those kindergarten students when the minimum amount of instructional hours for all students were at 1,060 hours. So that meant that essentially our kindergarten students were getting two days less worth of instruction through school year. Again, traditionally, prior to the official first day of school, the school district has run what was known as a Transition Day for all students who were transitioning from one building or one school to another. Those grades included fourth grade, also included sixth grade of the middle school and the ninth grade students of the high school. These transition days look a little bit different at each school, but it is an opportunity for students who are coming into a new building, an opportunity to tour the school, get to know the teachers. Parents were allowed to attend with that as well. One of the things related to school safety is that once school starts and all students are in, you tend to try to control the community and parent flow as much as possible. And with the Transition Day, we thought that it would be a perfect fit for kindergarten students to kind of join in that transition at the K3 schools, knowing that first, second, and third grade students weren't necessarily attending outside of perhaps maybe the teacher event that occurred later on that particular day. So we added through the calendar committee, had discussions, and there was some, some, some good debate on the plus deltas of that decision. But ultimately, the committee felt that it would be the best interest of students to go ahead and have kindergarten start 100%, just like the rest of the students on the first day of school, and then give them that opportunity on Transition Day to come in, meet teachers, get acting into the school, and so on and so forth.
So is this the first year that it's like this for the kindergartners?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So I, I would say that there was some, there was some great feedback there. Those who referenced maybe some angst or concern about it did offer some suggestions, did offer some positive feedback in other areas. And I think it would be, be who the district, that the individual elementary schools to all have that feedback and to try to incorporate that into their, not just the kindergarten Transition Day, but the entire back-to-school event for, for the, for the school. And then I, I would also say that it's, I think it's important for the district that those elementaries all be on the same page and that we have some consistency in that approach across elementary schools. Because we have in the past heard some things about one school doing things one way, another school doing things another way, and then there being some animosity about how their school is doing it because somebody else is doing it differently. So if there's anything we can do in those two events, I, I'm very comfortable with what is being proposed. Anyone else? Any thoughts or discussion? All right, thank you, Mr. Warman. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the calendar as presented. There is no further discussion. We shall move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries forward to zero. And I would just like to say thank you again to everyone who was involved in setting up this calendar, who was involved in the committee or involved in providing feedback to the committee. I think it has been very well received and I'm just tickled pink with the process itself. So thanks to everyone. We are on to section six, 6.1, Board Policies, First Reading. This is a discussion item. So we could go through the policies. Discussion by the board. We'll start with DA. Fiscal Management Goals/Priority Objectives. Any discussion on this policy? At two really minor things, not content related. In that second line, we say, within the confines of the resources available, well, there's a little wordy, if we could just say, within the confines of available resources, that would help. I got called up as I was reading that first sentence. And then the second to last paragraph. All funding managers, including but not limited to Chief Financial Officer, Superintendent, and Administrator, and just thought of, we said, and other administrators, that kind of make that read a little better. But as far as content goes, I did not have any suggestions. Anyone else on this policy? All right, thank you. Moving on to BBG, Budget Development and Adoption Process. Discussion on this policy. Let's see, we checked the NEPN there.
Okay.
Did we take out development and? Ms. Simpson, yeah, I believe the NEPN, just for clarity, reads Budget Adoption Process.
Okay.
So we're going to take out development and provided there are no objections, just to maintain consistency with the NEPN.
No objections. Thank you for verifying that.
All right, moving on, DBI, Budget Implementation, and Discussion on DBI. So you know, moving on to DVA. Revenues from Local Tax Sources. A discussion on DVA. Similarly, Mr. Dempsey, that should read Funds from Local Tax Sources if we want to maintain consistency with the man. Yes, please. And just a question in the second paragraph, the match tax for Mr. Kelman. In that first sentence, the second and third line, we have listed out certain things that says maybe included there, the minor capital improvements, technology, reading math, special sector time funds, or other. Are all of those still current, relevant, that list doesn't need updating either additions or subtractions?
Correct. Yeah, and then the last time we reviewed this, we added that comment after that. Any other legislative approval of that education program? Because that picks up things like the Opportunity Grant match and things like that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other discussion on the? All right, we want DKC, Expense Authorization/Reimbursements. Discussion on this policy. I see none. We're going to DKCA, Travel Professional Absence. Discussion on DKCA. This is starting.
Just one, there's something on page three, under Airline Arrangements. And number two, I think it should be, just add yes.
And then I would just like to ask down at the bottom of that third page, where we have the daily and per meal allowances, standard rate and the high cost locality rate. I would imagine that's something, because the IRS is involved, I imagine it's something that potentially could change each year.
Yes, it does, typically.
Yes, cool.
So is this something we need to make sure that we look at on an annual basis as opposed to a three-year basis?
Yeah, that's one, that's one route we could take. The other route is, I guess we could take this back and then just have a reference to those particular ones. Although we, we actually do a deduction from what's actually in the IRS special rate. Just because we don't do the, we, we do this no receipts policy. So in doing the no receipts policy, we, we bring that rate down a little bit so that it's kind of a win-win for both the traveler and the district, so.
So last year, for example, when we were issuing any kind of reimbursements, did we reference this policy or did we reference what the rates were?
No, we referenced this policy. We did, yeah. So anybody who traveled last year would get paid based on this policy.
Even if the, the guidelines had been updated by the IRS?
Correct.
Would anyone be opposed to, either board or Mr. Kelman, would you be opposed to changing this to reference those so that we are always current? And even potentially to say?
So that we wouldn't have to come back every?
Yeah, even potentially, and, and so that if it adjusts higher, that we're not paying lower than that.
Yeah, and we could reference the rates here and then just have, add language that basically says that it will get updated or the rates actually paid will be the ones that are reflected in the most recent IRS special rate publication.
I, I think I would.
I think.
I, I think I would rather say will be paid at the current rate and then that the finance offices, it will be able to provide. You know, if anybody wanted to know, which is what they would go to Policy Board, Policy Board Director, that you could provide in the latest, the greatest.
Okay. Yeah, because I know in years past, it was always the GSA rate. So a few years ago, we switched to the flat rate, basically, and then, so, yeah, we can just go to the IRS special rate.
Yeah, and the reason this caught my attention was just because of the drastic change we've seen in everything over the last two years. And if, you know, if we were referencing a policy with outdated numbers, I didn't want to do that, what I would call a disservice to folks with that reimbursement.
Yeah, and that's why I felt we definitely needed to raise the rates, just because of the increase in costs across the country.
Do, do we have any other further discussion on this one? Would it be okay to ask you to take this one back and to rework that part? There's no, you don't, you're not under any time crunch for this one particularly. Okay, so if we could take, remove this one from our first reading and ask you to come back in the future, that'd be great. Thank you, Kurt. Moving on to IFF, Lesson Plan Policy. So this one has been dramatically simplified. Any questions or discussion on IFF? Dr. Wyatt.
I think we had referred to professional staff members as certified in some of our other policies. Could we not, or did we say?
Yes, we do.
Because I just wanted to be consistent. I thought we had changed all of the others from professional to certified.
Yes, we did. Okay, great. And as a, just a point of reference, we've taken out the word policy out of most of our policies. So we could just rename this Lesson Plans. I would recommend we just went Lesson Plans instead of Lesson Plan Policy. Because there really is no I at that. Oh. Okay, so this is one that the board created at some point in the past. Yes, sir. And this paragraph of content is not or cannot be addressed anywhere else within the framework of the NEPN?
Uh, no, that's, that's why it was created. It was actually created during this, when this was relevant. We, we aren't aligned with, with these practices anymore. We've gone on to DTSS now. So that's why the, that the requirements are aligned with the Delaware Teaching Evaluation System. So five years from now, they come up with a new one, this is still going to be applicable.
Okay. Okay. Any further, thanks, have to lose any further discussion on this policy? All right, we go into IKAB, Report Cards/Progress Reports. Discussion on IKAB. Dr. Wyatt.
What is written is great. I just wondered if we should not mention the fact that about home access?
So I. Agree that home access is out there. My, my question to you would be from a. Board policy standpoint, how would you reference it? What would we direct? And I'm not questioning your statement, but if we're going to put in policy, that would be what we should be writing there.
I do have a question on that, though. Are we, are we consistent for that? Because I know we've had some conversations. I talked to Mr. Dick about it, um, that the printed report card is actually different. Than what you see on home access. And if we're going to where only you get it online, there, I do think that that needs to either be addressed in policy or. Something because. We don't really have, I I mean, unless now it's kind of like you get it on home access, they're not sending them home. It wasn't kind of really a discussion. It kind of just now, and then once you do, if you do receive a hard copy, because I happened to get one for a different reason. I did notice a big difference in what would have come home printed versus what was. Only available on actual home access.
So all I would say, just by, I was listening, I promise, but I was also multitasking and I read through it. And so there's nothing, all it says is they'll be distributed. So, so there's nothing in the policy about printed versus electronic. So again, I've taken your suggestion.
Could it be that I think is, is there, should there be a? Direction as to how it should be expected if everyone is doing it one way or no?
So that would be up to us as a board to with administrations input is if there was any. More. Fine direction to provide. So, I mean, I think it's, it's open for discussion as to. How we approach this. Both points are, both points are well, well heard in that if you, if you read the policy. I won't say it sounds dated, but this same policy could have applied twenty years ago. Just, and then, you know, look how far it comes twenty years as far as reporting, as far as what's available and what we quote unquote distribute. And is there anything at this juncture that? Would require this policy to be up? I don't have any specific feedback either way, so. Let's start it.
Um, what is the, the purpose for not printing? Is it a financial thing mostly?
Well, I think that's part of it. I think, you know, there is a significant expense associated with that, but I think also since we've entered the digital world. Uh, most people appreciate the convenience. Um, I don't know that we get any. Because we'll provide a hard copy for anybody that asks, and I believe we do provide them for kindergartners.
Kindergarten.
Go ahead, Mr. B.
Kindergarten gets harder copies. Um, the rest are available on home access. They request the hard copy to come home. One of the thought processes behind this, one, we were one of the last districts to go this route. Um, but the thought process being, I don't think, do they go on there for the report card grades? Is it natural? Right word here, uh, stating to get parents into those grade books on a regular basis. Once they start to learn the system, now they can see grades in real time coming in after questions at home. And I don't think that was going on when we just printed out the report cards and handed them out. Sometimes I came home and the parents were like, oh, my goodness, I didn't realize it was about to happen. So I I think that's one of the positive areas that it's done. We've got parents into grade books a lot more. Conversations are going home or all around the dinner table about, hey, what just happened last week on Friday, Johnny, for this assessment?
Are you able to access data on like how many kids' home access accounts are accessed?
Um, I could check with the person or basically our East School Home and Access guru. And see if that data would be easily before.
And is there a way to, you know, this is the policy, so there's stuff on the hard copy of the report card that's not on the. Is there a way to?
We had that discussion, uh, one evening. I worked with. Two different, actually three now, different employees within the district that would. Have knowledge of that was possible. We reached out to the, we were reaching out to other districts just simply if they wanted to be able to generate a PDF. And print it out. It sounds like extraordinarily simple to do, and for some reason, it is not extraordinarily simple.
I I just tried to pull up my, the one that I had PDF set down. I want to say something like even class ranks. There was something on the. The hard copy that you do not see when you pull up the digital. Um. That may not be exactly it, but there was, there definitely was. There was, um, it mentioned Mr. P K's name. Um, on the hard copy, it says not on the digital. Like, there's just things that I think the digital copy alone is missing. Um, and I wish, this is just me and La La Land, I wish it gave you an alert. Hey, it's report card. I can click on it. Here it is. Instead of you actually having to go physically look at it because, again. Not everybody's exactly on the days anymore. You used to know it's report card data came home in a little envelope, you know, and you knew. Um, now if you're having to physically go search for it just because it's the date out, if there was, you know, so. I just would love that cohesiveness between the schools. Where the school reaches out as much as the parents do have to do to get that information because. You want to, yes, it gets us in the grade book. I'm on it a lot. Um. It's a little frustrating at times because of how when grades can go in and all of a sudden you had a ninety, then you have a sixty, and then you're back, you know, and. That communication sometimes isn't always, um, it's scary for some parents, but, um. I think it's, I'm not saying that going. The digital way is wrong. I just wanted to have everything. That we can have on it. Available.
Promise you will continue to work on it the best that you possibly can.
So from a policy standpoint, is there, does any board member see something different that the board chooses to direct? Uh, the district and administration to do in terms of progress reporting and report. I for one. Would not like to see us go, what I will say is backwards to the paper. And I do like the idea, you know. If, if a parent. Isn't going to look at home access board, there's also a good chance that's the same parent that didn't look at the report card when it came over today. So I do like the fact of almost conditioning them throughout the course of the school year. To go to home access as the resource for all of your students', uh, progress, including those report cards.
Again, in the second paragraph, it says that it's going to be, um. It's going to be provided to each student's parent guardian. Yes, it's accessible by all the parents and guardians, but if they go on and get it. The only good thing about the hard copy is that we have to sign it and turn it back in so you know that they had to look at it. In order to sign it, whereas if it's just online. Like, so I'm not asking this next board meeting, but is there a way for them to click something? Or say that they saw the report card for accountability purposes, um, like the signed envelope was for all of us, um, growing up?
I haven't, you're almost talking like an email receipt.
Yeah.
Um, we could check in, I have a move that that's impossible.
I just want to make sure like parents are aware. I know that we have it. I know we tell them to. But if they're not doing it, like I just, I really just want to make sure our parents aren't involved. And I know we can't make them do that. I know that, but I want to make it as accessible as possible for them. To have a handle on what their kids are doing in school. I know we're not going to hit it a hundred percent. I know that. But I also don't want to create any barriers to, to our parents.
And the video, so, so what you're asking policy, the policy to me, I think it's going to be updated just in wording. For because of the fact where it says provide, report card provides, yes, they're there, but. Should it be digitally updated, not necessarily the word digital, but. Seem a little more current?
Like even post, like will each, each school will post report cards and enter in progress reports to each student's account. I don't know.
Mr. D, would you be willing to take this back with that feedback of? Just, again, not to, not directing new policy, but just updating the verbiage. Because it does, like I said, this, this could imply twenty years ago.
Yeah, I don't think there's a change for that. I think it still should be the overview it is, but just it could be worded a little bit more. What did I just say? The word, um, current, current.
So, do, if remain.
Yes.
So some of that generic language is, and we might go switch around, but it was simply because we wanted it pertaining to electronic or the paper copy. The kindergarten was still going out paper copies, so without getting into delineation of what we're doing, that's why some of that general language is left in there. So we felt like within the committee that generate report cards, provide report card, whether provided or generated. Electronically or paper. We can go back and try to play with some of the wording, but that was a thought process, not starting to. Kind of get cumbersome within the policy.
Is, is there anywhere else that we referenced? Actually a tough question here, James, but is there anywhere else in policy where we reference the fact that we have, if not named, but we have a home access? That provides an in-depth view for parents?
If it is, it would. Be in the grading policy, we referenced that the district data system. I can't remember the wording off the top of my head, though.
Because I know, you know, this references report cards, which is very cut and dry for every, at the end of every quarter. It references progress reports, which on the surface you could take to be interim progress reports. But for me, it also references the fact that a progress report. And at any point, I can go in and verify the progress of my student in each of their classes. It's not something that, it's not a report that's fed to me whether electronically or in paper. I have that ability and, you know, and maybe. There's just a line or two that here that references the fact that the, the district provides this ability for parents. To be able to update regularly, be updated themselves regularly on student progress.
And I think that puts it in positives, the parent's responsibility to do that, which I like that. Good job, Mr. Dempsey.
Yeah, I already have a paycheck tonight. Any other discussion in this policy? Mr. Morgan?
Just for reference, there is a, uh, post on our website that describes what the home access center provides links. Um, it was in the news section, so perhaps maybe we can go to the website and find ways to make more progress on it.
Correct. Alright, great too. Alright, James, any parting questions about the? Very clear direction that we. Alright, thank you, sir. Thank you, board. Uh, we're going to I K B homework. Discussion on I K B. See, now we go to I K F. Graduation requirements. Discussion on I K F, Mr. McCuskin.
Okay, somebody will have to. After a person on this, but. State graduation requirements are.
Twenty four credits.
Twenty four credits. Why are we the twenty seven?
Uh, you can just pick the high school process or rigorous, who are also. People run different schedules, so if you're running, say, a traditional schedule of seven periods, like some of our. Eight percent, over four years, you have a chance to twenty eight credits, twenty four to graduate, a lot of those are seventy twenty four. We run a semester before that, we ran an eighty block. She basically had eight cracks of credit every year, multiply that times four, she had a chance of thirty two credits. Where other districts have a chance at twenty eight credits. So when you're having an opportunity of eight credits. Per year, if we dropped it down to the twenty four, we could basically have kids. Almost other juniors, we do not want that, right? We want them in school. We want them to take more classes and more rigorous. Um, credits, how there is, uh, at the bottom there, some of our special education students. Um, do the I E P E D process and things like that. Um, we came out and say lower down to, but go to the state minimum of twenty four credits. And there's still a border of home, just like everyone else.
So my question is. If we're doing, um, what about if you're doing some like all type stuff? So if you're doing, um. Like not with a study hall, but if you did some work-based learning, you do not gain credits for that, correct? Or do you add some, some of them?
Yeah, only through your C T pathways and everything.
Not through your C T, like if you were, let's say you had your requirements or you had twenty four credits or twenty five credits. And you wanted to do something where you could be linked with this hospital or you could be linked. Were we stopping kids from doing things like that because we're requiring twenty seven credits?
Not that I'm aware of. We could run a survey out of the kids, second, I, I, I don't get that, that feeling at all.
Okay.
I mean, we have.
Yeah.
You probably have to be kids missing out because of that.
I don't think so, because they, I mean, they have to take math in the senior year anyway. So they're going to, they have to be in the building and they have, they still have. For the students who have already received their twenty four credits, they only have to take really two classes. Together, or through classes to get their twenty seven credits. So they could conceivably be at by ten o'clock and they are getting credit for work-based learning. So many of our students have more than twenty seven credits when they graduate anyway.
And there are, just to add on, there are districts, um, that have twenty seven, higher than twenty seven, some are twenty four. It's like a twenty six, so there's no real, I would say the majority of districts are twenty four, but there is no consistency across districts.
Yeah.
As far as the required credits.
The change from four to three sciences, what's the thought behind that?
So three is the required number by the state. Um, and the thought was if kids want to take four, they want to go into some kind of science pathway. Or when they graduate, want to go into the science field, the science classes are still available to them. But dictate that with science, we could be keeping kids out of other pathways that they want to be in. Maybe they want to take an extra A P class, maybe they, whatever they want to do. So the, the thought process was it's lower than the state minimum, kids that want to take science still open to one. Kids that are not pursuing necessarily, don't want to go into a, a science-type pathway when they graduate, they're going to have their classes over.
Um, uh, just, just run through this real quick. So English, our four is the state minimum. Math, I already heard, science, I already heard, social studies, our three is state minimum. World languages, two is state minimum. So. Where do we, where do our extra three come from now, just in the additional coursework?
Additional coursework.
Okay. Okay, alright. Any further questions or discussion on this one? Okay. Thank you again, Mr. D, and then on to K F. Request for use of school facilities, questions or discussion on K F. Alright, see, you're. I'm sorry.
Um. I, I've read the policy and is there a, so, because I know that this is something that sometimes gets a little. Uh, either. Not, not done, um. Maybe, maybe because the policy has all the information, but not necessarily like a directive of who, who things go to. And I'm wondering if that should be part of the policy. So the fact of like, um. The chain that it follows.
Meaning like the requests?
Well, like, uh, once a request is submitted. And, I mean, in the policy, should it stay in here exactly who they should be submitted to? Because I think.
It has to go to the building.
And when we look at the actual request form.
It doesn't.
It's, but it, it does have signature blocks of that. Of who, who has to sign it, so.
But I guess.
I, I understand where we're going with this.
Yeah.
And we don't want to implement policy to, um, make up for human error.
No.
So I think, I think we've got a good form. If we want to add something, um. In the existing form. That is much more like. Explains to the user a little bit more friendly. I think that would be the way to go because I, I get it. It, there's. Even though we have signed by the principal, signed by the designated superintendent, designated. Even though we have signed by the principal, signed by the, the designated superintendent, designated. There's nothing that says like return to user or something like that.
Yeah.
I think we can fix that, but I don't know necessarily. And I, and I'll say one thing we. Usually draw a line between is the board policy dictating what needs to be done. And then the district procedures to how it gets done.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Strick.
Yeah, I think just one thing, I think on the heels of talking about the digital. Report card, like, should some of these forms be digital as well? Just a comment. I don't know that it needs to be policy or anything, but it's.
Well, Mr. Kellerman is actually the man and he has been, he's been digitizing quite a few of our forums. And that is a bit of a heavy lift, but I think ultimately. Our goal is to, to transform. Into a much more digital uh forms platform, but all of the next ones we've been looking at, yeah. And they all cost a little bit of money, yeah, to get an improvement into, but when you say digitizing and stuff that could uh. Form that actually contains an electronic workflow with it.
Yes.
Sort of passed through approval processes from one to another.
Yeah, because we did that with all of our extra timesheets. That's now completely digitized and it's got its own workflow for your school.
And are we doing that ourselves? We're using?
We have a vendor that we went through, uh, but it's all online based.
Okay, great. This will cost you anything else?
No, I just want to make sure, like, I think this from the community standpoint. Like. I think we're getting back to them. Being at our, their schools, and I feel we want them there. I really do feel like. We want. It to be easy to be able to. Provide this outside use. And that, that form is a lot, too. But, you know, just, I want to see the community be able to use. What, what we have. Be part of it.
And. So it, to that point, I would say that I, you know, it's been. Three years since I probably looked at this policy, right? And uh, as I'm reading through. You know, stuff that I should know, but I, I get a little surprised that about how much we are according to policy. Opening our arms to those community organizations, specifically those that are doing anything either with our students or revolving around education. Um, I was very pleased to see that. Mr. Morgan, you have motion?
Just wanted to note that there is an edible PDF online that community members can open up. I'm trying to pull it out, but then it's not. There's no workflow associated with it. They would literally either have to print it off or email it forward to private owners.
Anything else on this policy? All right, thank you for the feedback to administration in this process. Okay, um, so. That concludes our initial discussion, first reading policies. These will come back for a vote later. We're up to section eight personnel resignation. Mrs. Stark.
Make motion, we approve resolutions eight point one through eight point four as written.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries.
Section eleven, I would make a re- uh, make a motion, we appear a resolution one point one and eleven point two as written.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all is in favor?
I.
Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries four to zero. Just like to take a moment to work with Shelley Simpson. To her new position. Recorder working closely.
Section thirteen personnel offers of employment and make a motion, we approve resolutions thirteen point one, the thirteen point four is written.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section fifteen personalities of absence and I'd emotionally approve resolutions fifteen point one through fifteen point sixteen as written.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on this motion? Um, so, just, just a question. Uh, at the beginning of each school year, or how are days allotted to staff? Is it front-loaded at the beginning or is it through year on year?
Uh, they do have entitlement to the full ten days if they were to use the ten days uh prior to their part. Middle of the school year without hurting, same time they've used, you didn't have to withhold it. From the HX, uh, but then employees, ten month employees are allocated one sick day per month.
Okay. All right, but it's front-loaded, so they have.
They do have entitlement access to those.
And that is ten quote unquote sick days and three personals.
Three of those ten can just.
Three of those ten, okay. All right. So we are. Okay. So I'll just, again, we're only in. Completed February, now they're all the way through March and we have a tremendous amount of extra days coming through, so. Could be a long three months for the rest of the school year. So. Um, I don't know that there's a solution to that. It's just more of an observation. So. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries five to zero, four to zero, excuse me.
Section nineteen personnel appointments, I make a motion, we approve resolution nineteen point one and nineteen point two as written.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section twenty one on the business and make a motion, we approve resolution twenty point, twenty one point one school choice as written.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion in that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all even favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero.
Section twenty two other business field trips and make a motion, we approve resolution twenty two point one as presented.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries four to zero.
And section twenty four of the business board policies and make a motion, we approve resolution twenty four point one as modified during this.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Stark. Thank you, Mrs. McCuskin. On a section twenty four other business, twenty four point, I'm sorry, twenty five. Uh, section twenty five board reports discussion, other items, twenty five point one, with a new order. Opportunity for board members to address or bring up any topics not covered elsewhere on the agenda. The floor is open. Mrs. Stark.
So I usually find myself most naturally in the sports world, just. But just where all our kids are, my husband is, um, but this past month I got to go to the Legally Blonde. Um, show and I got to go to the FFA, FFA convention, so just. Seeing those two different worlds than what I'm most accustomed to. I'm just, I was just thoroughly impressed, genuinely impressed. By just what I saw at FFA and the drama club. Fantastic.
I, I as well. Threw it away by the Legally Blonde, right? Just. Not my, not my cup of tea, usually not a big theater guy, but uh, last two years it's just been mesmerized. Yeah.
So much talent.
And, and I'll add to that, um, this past Saturday, I had the opportunity again this year to help out with judging the state policy of the mind competition. Um, and to see those students and to see our lake students and the things they come up with, how they put themselves out there, the things that they do, the solutions to these problems. Uh, it's just, uh, it's just phenomenal. Um, and on that note as well, we just approved uh the resignation of her EPR position for that. Uh, assignment, this Pam Hobbs at Central, a long time. Yes, just the one for, not counselor, but. Sponsor, director, advisor, advisor for Odyssey the Mind. Um, and the things that she has done over the years, rallying the community, rallying those kids, it's great. So those are going to be big shoes to fill.
And she got an award too. I don't know the details of that, but I did see it on Facebook that she got some award from Odyssey of the Mind.
She was nominated for what they call an Omer Award. Um, it was granted that, which is kind of the, the highest award that you can get within the organization for her dedication and results. Again, big shoes to fill. Uh, floor is open. I do want to say congratulations. I don't have the list to be able to run down, but congratulations to all of our teachers of the year. Uh, building teacher of the year that are announced. Look forward to all of the other um. Awards that are going to be coming in the other areas as well for our announcement in May. For our district teacher of the year, so great work to everyone. Um, and the last thing, our next meeting is, uh, we will have one meeting in the month of April. Um, that is going to be after the break, that will be Thursday, April twenty seventh, uh, will be seven PM in the central business. Seeing nothing else, do not believe, um. We have a need for executive session and we'll involve board members, Mr. Norman. All right, no need for executive session, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Emotional floor properly seconded for adjournment, any question or discussion in that motion? Um, seeing none to vote, all is in favor? I, any opposed? The extensions, motion carries four to zero. Board is adjourned at eight twenty two PM. Please be sure to donate. Stay safe, everybody. Have a good night.